On to item six point five or ten forty-five AM items. Consideration of report from the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, Clerk. Supervisor Pyska.
So I, I wanted to share with all of you the work that Clerk has been doing in partnership with the risk reduction over, let's see, I think it's been about a year and a half now. There's a lot of work going on in our county. Clerk has been able to bring many millions of dollars in for fire mitigation. And I get asked a lot, what is our county doing to prepare for fire season and to, you know, work on our, our, um, our vegetation management, which is a massive issue. And Clerk has been doing a great deal of work, so I, um, I just wanted to let you know what's been happening, what's on the horizon, what are the possibilities? And that there are resources available throughout the county. So I hope you enjoy the presentation and Will. I appreciate you coming for another week and we had to push you last week because it went a little long. So I really thank you for your patience on that.
Uh, no problem. I'm glad to be here. Thanks for having us. And I'm excited about the opportunity to fill everybody in about what Clerk's been up to over the last couple of years here. Let's see, I do have a presentation to share. Hopefully everybody can see that, okay?
Perfect.
All right, joining me today is Laurel Bard, our Civic Spark Fellow. She's been working with us to help prioritize some future projects and help us implement the funding we have. And before we get too far in it, yeah, I'm Will Evans, the Executive Director of Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. Clerk is what we call it. Clerk is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization that our goals are trying to collaborate with all the different interests in Lake County, interested in the environment and solving issues around Clear Lake. We're also interested in studying Clear Lake and the surrounding areas and implementing projects and programs that help address the issues and problems with our environment and our economy, both locally and worldwide. So currently our, our big programs, we have our Clerk Lab and the Fire and Forestry Program. The lab, it's an analytical lab that works for water utilities, helps them maintain regulatory compliance and is currently the only accredited lab in the county, helping to keep those lab fees from leaving the county. And then the Fire and Forestry Program, as Supervisor Pyska mentioned, we have been fairly successful in getting grants the last couple of years. So today I'm going to focus mainly on the Fire and Forestry Program. And I'd love to come back at a future date and fill you in more on the lab, because that's been an interesting project as well. But so today, and it has last week's date, but same presentation, same information. We're going to go over the CalFire Grants. We worked to get a Forest Health Grant and a Fire Prevention Grant. Then Laurel's going to fill us in about the Regional Prioritization Planning Item. And then I'll, I'll wrap things up with some future projects and funding on the horizon. And then we'll have some time for questions at the end. So the Fire and Forestry Program, this kind of got started, uh, well, you know, here in Lake County, we have a problem with fires, everybody knows. That's kind of a complicated issue and I won't go into why it's a problem, but I will focus on what we're doing about it. So starting in, uh, end of twenty seventeen, beginning of twenty eighteen, one of the Clerk Board Members, Carolyn Rutan, she was asked by Harbin Hot Springs to help restore their watershed. And Carolyn being the, with the background she had, she starts looking at grants that could help address this. So she worked with Harbin Hot Springs to write a Forest Health Grant Proposal that was funded at the beginning of twenty eighteen. It was about four hundred thousand dollars, covered about five hundred acres of work for cleaning up damaged forests in the fire and then also doing reforestation in areas and then a little bit of prescribed fire in a few places that warranted it. But, uh, that was the first Forest Health Grant ever awarded in Lake County. And afterwards, they, Harbin started talking to a lot of their neighbors and other retreat centers. And then, starting in June of twenty nineteen, we started getting several requests for assistance with grants. And also that around that time, I went to a screening of Wilder Than Wild at the Sopares Theater. And this was kind of a community organizing effort, trying to bring all the people involved in fire resilience together in one place to get to know each other. I think this is actually where I met Supervisor Pyska. So it sort of hit me then that this was a, a big thing. And I think, you know, Clerk could do something to help address this for the community. So we started kicking around this idea of rather than, you know, submitting several grant applications from multiple landowners in the county, what if we all work together and turn in one big proposal? And then, you know, it's, everyone's applying together, we're all working together. And rather than having everybody compete against each other, we actually end up helping each other out. So we had this idea and then in July, we had a meeting with CalFire Battalion Chief Mike Wink. And he sort of, we pitched this idea to him and his eyes sort of lit up that this, this is a great idea. So with the, at that point, you know, we kind of hit the ground running. And I had a meeting with another nonprofit called the Watershed Research and Training Center. They're, they're based up in Trinity County. And this was kind of a coincidence that I had already done a little bit of research about them because they're a nonprofit similar to Clerk. They've been around for twenty-five years. And I was kind of looking at, you know, where they are and then where I want our organization to be. So I set up a meeting with their Executive Director just to kind of talk shop and compare notes. And coincidentally, the, the Watershed Center had just received a giant block grant from the state to help build capacity in communities that were, you know, struggling with fire resilience and trying to organize everything. So kind of the series of events of we're getting asked for help, we kind of realized the scope of the problem and then we started getting some support. We got a small amount of funding, about ten thousand dollars, to organize an effort to do these big grants, which was kind of the, the big thing when we met with the Watershed Center. They realized the potential we had with our organization and we just needed to get more funding into, to people on the ground. So, uh, once we kind of had those pieces lined up, we hit the ground running, trying to get as much, many projects and people involved as possible. I, you know, have a pretty good record of working on competitive grants in Lake County. And a lot of times we, we struggle to be competitive. So, uh, for various factors that a lot of times are out of our control. So I tried to make the proposal as competitive as possible. And one of the, uh, well, several things we did for that, one is asking for all of the treatment types. So we put, this is another benefit of having everybody working together is, you know, somebody that wants to replant trees, you can lump that in with somebody that wants to do fuel reduction and then they both get credit for both of them in their applications. So, uh, we included all the treatment types. We wanted to have a, a mix of all different types of partners. So, uh, you know, federal, state, local, government, non-government, organizations like the retreat centers and all the way down to individual landowners. Trying to build as big a, you know, coalition, which again, I've realized it's harder to say no to a big group of people than it is just one entity that applies on their own. So our goal, you're trying to spread funding around geographically and submit that single proposal for Lake County, but trying to keep the project size manageable. And the benefits, you know, achieves a landscape scale project, which one thing is a lot of talk in the industry of fire resilience, you know, increasing pace and scale. And a big hindrance to that is the way that we've split up ownerships of all our land. It's, you know, everyone has private property rights and if you cross a property line, then that's a new owner you have to coordinate with and see what their, their desires are for their land. So by having a big grant, everybody's sort of forced to work together and get along and get what they want out of it. So from CalFire's perspective, this is very streamlined because they have, you know, one grant agreement that they can send to an entity that they have been working well with and they know they won't have issues with maintaining compliance with grant requirements and that sort of thing. It also expands access to funding to more landowners because a lot of people wouldn't, wouldn't even think about going after a Forest Health Grant on their own. You know, they might, may not even get that far through reading what the application requires. So, uh, that's one thing I think is a really good benefit of doing it this way. And we can also shove, uh, package shovel-ready projects with projects that are not quite shovel-ready. And again, that's sort of a way to lift them all up to the level of funding. So, uh, throughout this process, we kept everything pretty low-key in terms of public outreach. We relied largely on our grassroots network of people that we already knew. And it turned, it, it did, you know, I say it spread like wildfire, like a lot of things, but it was sort of, you know, we would, neighbors and people would ask us, you know, can you come to my land? And we always tried to strive to get them to get three or four people together before we could actually start structuring a project. So that, uh, you know, we weren't working with too many, you know, individual landowners. Um, and then the other thing, we didn't really use an evidence-driven prioritization process. This was very much just picking the, the low-hanging fruit projects that you ask around and everybody says, oh yeah, we need this fuel breakdown or we need this area treated. And I, I was kind of surprised at how consistent everybody's anecdotal recommendations were, which in a lot of ways maybe that is a good system. But in the future, we want to try to, to continue to do this and try to have more public involvement, more engagement from people and also try to use a more data-driven approach to it. So that process, which we started in July twenty nineteen and then we worked all the way up until the grants were due in beginning of December twenty nineteen. And that resulted in two large proposals. One's the Lake County Hazardous Fuel Reduction Project Phase One, which is our Fire Prevention Grant. This was valued at three million dollars and was awarded in March twenty twenty. So it was just about a year ago. And it, actually, I, I got the letter that we were getting funding the same day that I found out they were canceling all professional sports because of the pandemic. So, uh, you know, the celebration was a little muted at the time, but, uh, you know, it's just beginning of a lot of good things. So another reason I'm glad to be here today updating everybody. So included in this Fire Prevention Grant is fuel reduction around the Mount Canockdie Interface in the Black Forest. Mendocino National Forest has five hundred and four acres of hazard tree removal. We're doing two fuel breaks, one in Scotts Valley outside the city of Lakeport and then another one kind of south of the landfill outside the city of Clear Lake. We're doing some fuel reduction up on Siegler Mountain at the communication site up there. We have funding to do lot clearing on two hundred priority lots in residential subdivisions. We're also supporting the South Lake Fire Safety Council Chipping Program, funding the Tribal Ecological Restoration Alliance Workforce Development Program. We'll be bringing a prescribed fire training exchange event to Lake County in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then we're working on regional prioritization planning, which is basically trying to streamline this process so that we can do it again and not have to spend as much time or money on it. Then this other proposal is the, uh, the Forest Health Grant Proposal, which this one is a five million dollar ask. And we were in conversations with CalFire to have this project funded in March of last year. And due to the pandemic's impact on the budget, CalFire was unable to do any grants for twenty twenty. And, uh, you know, that's, was disappointing, but understandable given everything else going on. But I'm happy to report that I, I had a call with CalFire yesterday, the Forest Health Staff, and we're, we're back on. So we're having the conversations that we should have had a year ago, but they're looking at funding this proposal hopefully before the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July first. But all of this depends on the legislature actually taking action on the budget before July first, which people that follow that know that it's, it's possible. They've done several early action things this year related to the pandemic. They may be doing this or they may not. So it's still just kind of play by year. But we're still banking on this funding coming in later this year. So included in this, and I'll go real quick, seven hundred acres of fuel reduction up on Cobb Mountain, five hundred and twenty-six acres of fuel reduction in the National Forest above the hills in Lucerne, hundred and fifty-four acres of reforestation in areas impacted by the valley fire and the river fire, a bioenergy project investment, basically duplicating the equipment that is proposed to be built at Red Hills on, at another location on the North Shore, trying to cut down on the travel time to deliver the biomass to the site. This Forest Health Grant also includes money for prioritization planning to help streamline things in the future. There's two research components to this. One is through UC Davis to do a revegetation study and climate adaptation model for the National Forest. And this is kind of acknowledging that some of the forest is not going to grow back the way it was before and we need to anticipate the change so that we're not trying to force Mother Nature into a box. Then the Climate Action Reserve is another nonprofit. They're down in LA and they do a lot of carbon market tracking. So they're interested in trying to establish a value for biochar so that people can get credit for sequestering that carbon when they make biochar. And that's a topic, you could do a whole webinar about biochar if you're interested. So with this, I'm going to take a short break from the PowerPoint and we're going to move over to the Clerk website for a second. And this is a web map, if anyone's interested in looking at all of those, the project areas, because I did kind of run through them real quick. Go to the Clerk website and just scroll down. There's a link, there's Maps and Data, Fire and Forestry Projects. And that'll take you to this web map, which shows where all this work is. And I'm going to do, just spend a few minutes going through a few areas in detail. And I encourage anyone who's interested in learning more about specific work proposed in, in their part of the county, pull up the map and, and find out the exact locations. And then you can email me if you have any other questions from that. But, uh, so starting out, well, first off, this map has both of the grants on it. So the yellow areas are the Fire Prevention Grant, which was funded last year. And then the orange, yellow and red, or the orange, green and red is for the Forest Health Grant. So, uh, starting out, this is the Mount Canockdie Interface Fuel Break. It's maintaining a fuel break that's already there. And, um, you know, you can kind of see, once the parcels pull up, it's, uh, those locations are put in strategic places for a pretty good reason, you know, clearing fuels around the subdivisions. One thing I'm particularly excited about with this proposal is that we were able to lump the Black Forest in with the private property because it, let me see if I can highlight the Black Forest here. So that's all federal land. So that means that that's, the way you do that project is a lot different than the way you do projects on private land. But from the fire resilience perspective, it's, it's all the same land, you know? The, the fire doesn't stop because the federal government owns the land. So we're able to send money into maintaining the whole interface and not just private or federally owned portions. Kind of zooming over to the western end of the county. This is the Scotts Valley Fuel Break. That's, uh, it's maintenance of some dozer lines that were put in during the Mendocino Complex Fire. So the idea here is we'll be maintaining the dozer lines and then the landowner is going to come back and maintain the areas between the lines with prescribed fire on their own. Then down here, this is Benmore Valley, where you can kind of see in the photo that the, the fire kind of burned around the, the top perimeter of the valley. And in those areas that burn, we're proposing to do some tree planting. And then in the part that didn't burn, we're going to be reinforcing the fuel breaks there, trying to preserve the trees that are still growing. Zooming up to Lucerne area, this is all work that is going to be managed by the, the National Forest. And it's actually a good illustration of the differences in the two grant programs. The yellow being that Fire Prevention Grant, it focuses on defensible space, ingress, egress routes, kind of the areas where people are impacted by fires. So the National Forest is proposing to do hazard tree removal along the roads. And it, it's good. I was actually just up there on Saturday and there are some sections that just, it's really dangerous with how many dead trees there are right on the road. But then the other parts, the Forest Health Grant is, it's more landscape, you know, broad brush, trying to get caught up on the fuel that's been building up in our forest for a hundred plus years. And zooming over here is the Fuel Break outside of Clear Lake. And it's, it's shown, this is about a thirty acre spot, but it's actually in combination with a few other projects. You can see, once the parcels load, it's basically, uh, you know, buttoned up right up next to the city limits. And I'm actually working with the landowner, the city of Clear Lake and BLM on kind of a joint project here where BLM is going to do some dozer maintenance on this line that has actually been cut in for several years during fire response times. And so with that dozer line and then Clerk's going to do some fuel reduction here and we're going to create a corridor that the landowner can come back later and use prescribed fire. That's, uh, uh, going to be fairly protected with dozer lines on either side. So, uh, I'm excited to be working with several partners in that area. So now we'll zoom down to the Cobb Mountain part of the county. And this is where we did the bulk of the Forest Health Grant work is proposed. Because this is largely, I mentioned how we, we leveraged this grassroots network of, you know, neighbors knowing neighbors and everybody kind of knows everyone. And it kind of started up on Cobb Mountain and that's reflected in the, the parcels that we included in the grant. So one of the things we consistently heard from people was there's an area, the top of the Kelsey Creek Drainage, which, you know, if you pull up the map of the county of everywhere that's burned and Kelsey Creek Drainage is that one spot that's not burned. So we wanted to make sure we did some fuel reduction up there. Here's the landowner, this parcel's not burned, it's off Bottle Rock Road. So that's, that'll be good to play catch-up on fuel reduction there. And then going down this way, we had an opportunity in several places. This corridor here is Harrington Flat Road. And, you know, we had it, uh, some landowners that like this owner owns both of these parcels. So since they were willing to work with us in the grant, we kind of created shaded fuel breaks all along Harrington Flat Road. And that's one of those roads that it's a prescriptive right-of-way, so the county doesn't actually own beyond the pavement. So the maintenance is just cutting the vegetation right at the pavement edge, which is, you know, really bad for evacuation during fire. So I'm glad we're going to be able to pull that back some. Then these other areas, this is Siegler Mountain here. That's that communications site and the Fire Prevention Grant and then doing some other areas around closer to the parcels. This is the Mountain of Attention Property, which was burned pretty bad in the fire, the valley fire. This is Avalon Springs, right at the part of Big Canyon Road where you drop down into the canyon. And then it goes down into the south part of the county. We have a few other property owners down there. And then there's nothing to the south of there because we are supporting the South Lake Fire Safety Council's Chipping Program. Anyway, so with that, I'll kind of bring it back to the slides. And again, I encourage anyone to pull that up and kind of look around and see what is really going on in their area. Current status as of March, right now, the Forest Health Grant, we're, uh, five million dollars is kind of a penciled-in budget. It may go up, may go down depending on what CalFire is finally wanting, wanting to fund with us, which they'll know once they finally know how much funding they have. But we are expecting a grant agreement by July with that, for that project. Then the Fire Prevention Grant, the three million dollar grant, we filed the CEQA notice last fall and then it was posted in January and finally ended February twenty-fifth. So now that that CEQA notice period has run out, we can hit the ground running with the boots-on-the-ground work. So I've been frantically trying to execute sub-awards with some other partners to actually hire contractors and get the boots-on-the-ground happening. So also a part of the grant, we've been facilitating the Risk Reduction Authority Standing Committee. We've been using this as kind of the, the public arena for discussing how to implement this grant and how to do our planning. And through that, we worked with them to distribute the funding for lot clearing through two different community groups that are already engaged in that. And we do have, at least right now, about ninety-five thousand dollars left that's not been earmarked for a specific area of the county or an organization. So we're hopeful that, uh, we can use that as seed money to try to get a new landowner support program going somewhere in the county, maybe county-wide, uh, you know, there's a lot of options, uh, you know, a lot of options to work with. And then we're also doing the prioritization planning, which Laurel has been the lead person on that. And with that, I'll kick it over to Laurel.
Yeah, thanks, Will. So I'm working on a regional prioritization plan for Lake County, which is also sort of an implementation plan for an existing county plan called the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Will, if you could switch to the next slide. So the Community Wildfire Protection Plan was created in two thousand nine and it was intended to identify priority areas across the county for fuel reduction and other projects intended to reduce fuel risks. So that could be things like landowner assistance programs, chipping programs, fuel breaks around certain community areas and all of that. The CWPP is currently in the process of being updated by the Lake County Resource Conservation District. And the update is drawing on help from community input, oversight from fire professionals and other environmental experts, including tribal environmental experts. Uh, and our hope is that this updated plan will help us seek grants for Lake County from the state of California because it lends legitimacy to grant proposals. So, um, this is, the map that you see here on this slide is sort of what the work that I do every day looks like. So I work on a GIS program to map these priority areas, both as they were in two thousand nine and also incorporating input from different community groups. So this is intended to be similar to the Regional Forest and Fire, gosh, collaborative. I sort of forget what the C stands for. Capacity Program, there we go, uh, which are regional plans, which usually include either different watersheds or different counties, but this is specific for Lake County. And this prioritization plan that I'm making will be based primarily on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So prioritizing areas that are already indicated in that plan and that will be added based on community input. Its intention is to develop a framework to streamline future community-wide projects. So this goes back to what Will was talking about when he said that Clerk used our existing grassroots network to, um, put in projects for the Forest Health and Fire Protection Grants. But in the future, we hope to be able to use these maps to do proactive outreach to the areas that are most impacted instead of using, uh, being hindered sort of by the existing connections that we already have. And this will, again, hopefully put Lake County in a better position to receive funding in the future. And these are a couple of potential funding areas where we hope to be able to get some money using this project that I'm doing. You can switch to the next slide, Will. So in order to use this prioritization plan, we have to do two types of planning. The first one is what I'm doing right now, which is the top-down planning. And this is large-scale prioritization using a series of factors that can be applied and assessed in every region in the county. So this determines where we're going to do work and where we're going to focus our efforts. And then when we have those areas prioritized and identified, we go on to specific site plans, which tells us what we're doing and what the specific procedures are that we have to follow in every location. Next slide. So yeah, top-down planning. I'm using a couple data metrics to determine priority areas in the CWPP, including the CalFire Fire Threat Classification, which determines areas that are at risk of power line-caused wildfires. So they use a couple of data metrics like vegetation type, slope, proximity to communities. I'm also using the CalFire Fire Hazard Severity Classification, data about the fire history and management history in the last ten years, the area's status or proximity to evacuation routes, proximity to community growth boundaries, the wildland urban interface, tribal areas and towns, as well as field surveys and community input and potentially with further workshopping other factors. So all of these go into determining the area's status at, from high to low priority. You can, yeah. And now this is an example of bottom-up planning. So this is a look at Avalon Springs and the really like granular level of detail that we go into once we determine a project area. So what we would do is maybe work with the landowner so they could develop a forest management plan. And this would help with CEQA and other permitting. And this would also give us a baseline of what the landowner is comfortable with and would like to be done on their land. We're working on developing a treatment area mapper, potentially, which landowners could use independent of us to map their property. We haven't rolled that out. We haven't rolled that out yet because we found that it is helpful for us to be out there to go and look at individual units. So in the future, we may or may not roll out this program, for now, we're just going ourselves. So we'll really be working on individual site plans for every project and this is the second step or later steps after we've developed this prioritization. So this is an overview of our project process. So this is what we would do in each area, we would make a plan and either this is a forest management plan or some other type of plan where we really. Cement what we're doing, where we're doing it, and this is meeting with landowners, meeting with government agencies if it's appropriate and if they own the land. And determining goals and preferences and then going on to environmental review, CEQA, NEPA. Cultural resources, just essentially making sure that the project is ready for funding and then we'll look for grant funding and use grant funding. To apply to these projects and I think in some cases, it may be that we get grant funding first and then go into this phase, it really depends. And then finally, of course, there's the implementation stage, which is really boots on the ground, that's when people are doing work. Getting stuff done that they need to get done, working with the landowners to hire contractors. And then finally, monitoring, which is where Clerk comes in, verifies that work is completed, that work is being done and we report. On the grant metrics, so this is the whole lifetime of a project. So where we're at right now with the prioritization plan, as of March twenty twenty one, the CLWPP update is underway. I've been doing public outreach at different municipal advisory councils. I think my next meeting is going to be with West Region Town Hall, I believe it's on the twenty fourth of this month. So if anyone listening wants to attend that and that's their region, I'm also going to go back to the East Region Town Hall on April seventh. So look out for me there and I'll also be presenting at the next Cobb Area Council Meeting. And this is specifically where I'm explaining what areas are priority areas in the two thousand nine CWPP and asking for community input. On new priority areas for this Community Welfare Protection Plan update. So going to those meetings is really important because it's a way to get a community input and participation in something that affects all of us, which is wildfire protection. And I've been doing this work with Clerk, obviously, we're giving this presentation and also the Risk Reduction Authority. A county group and the Lake County Resource Conservation District who is working on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
All right, thanks Laurel, and now I'm going to get into kind of future projects and funding. Obviously, in the future, we want to utilize all the work and data gathering that Laurel's been doing in, in future community-wide grant proposals and. As I kind of alluded to before, that I, one of my big goals for, for this. This effort is to kind of make it public formally in a sense of let's, let's ask, let's make sure we've gotten formal public input on. You know, three or five million dollar proposal before it goes in, just to make sure we're not missing anybody. And I think a lot of the outreach that Laurel's been doing at the community level is going to help deal with that issue. But also, we want to continue to work with the Risk Reduction Authority to build more community partnerships and that's. There, I mentioned, we have that ninety five thousand dollars that's still, you know, unencumbered for lot clearing and I'd really like to see that. As a, you know, work with a new group to get new services out there to people because I think those helping landowners, you know, while it may be. You know, you're the homeowner, it's your responsibility, I think we can do a lot as a community to, to help people do what they need to do on their properties. Another thing, I want to enter into a master stewardship agreement with the US Forest Service. The point of this is this would allow Clerk to actually manage work on federal lands up there. And one of the things that we've managed to do is actually. Kind of max out the capacity of the local Forest Service staff. And one thing, this is kind of back to that issue of pace and scale, we want to try to do more, we're always trying to do more, but. You got to be strategic about how you do that and kind of our current situation is. Everybody knows the, the forest was basically completely destroyed in twenty eighteen, but and then, you know, last year, another fire kind of finished the job, but. The, the federal government has not made new appropriations for new staff people to implement new contracts there. Which is unfortunate because, you know, they're great when there's a disaster, the feds throw money at the problem, but. If there are people that actually understand the forests and work for the forests to manage those contracts, you know, they can only do two, three hundred acres a year with their staff, so. Because we were able to get the fire prevention grant, that's going to keep them busy for the next three or four years, so we're looking at. Entering into this agreement and then having a growing Clerk staff so that we can control the, the work that's being done up there and. You know, because we can ask for more staff funding for Clerk through these grants, we can't ask for more staff funding for the Forest Service, it doesn't work like that, so. So obviously, we want to secure funding to support all this in the future and kind of areas we're, we're looking to support is, you know, facilitation and collaboration, which is one thing we've realized through this whole process is. If you have a grant opportunity that pops up and you don't already have your, your team together, you're already behind. And that was something we had to do, that's why it took so many months to get those proposals together, is trying to figure out who is doing what and where. So that's something I think it would be a good investment, money well spent keeping that collaboration going on a monthly, regular basis. Also, project tracking and monitoring, keeping track of where work's being done so that we know when it's going to come up. Again, for maintenance and then know not to work there if it was just recently done, that's obviously important too and then. Planning and grant writing, you know, as I mentioned, we had a little bit of funding from the Watershed Center to kind of get this going, but. We'd like to keep it going and, you know, we'll probably take more money than we got from them originally, we, we worked on a lot of volunteer motivation to get this off the ground and. Happy to see where it went, but keeping it sustainable is probably going to take a little more funding. One of the other things we're doing is trying to develop new partnerships with people outside the county and. Develop new landowner assistance programs for kind of the larger scale properties. And to that end, we've started this, another project, it's the North Bay Forest Improvement Program. And this was an opportunity we got pulled into by the Rebuild North Bay Foundation, which their service area is. Sonoma, Lake Napa and Mendocino Counties, kind of the, the four counties around here that have real bad fire problems, so. They approached CalFire and applied for this funding, it's one and a half million dollars and it's to develop a new landowner assistance program similar to. The federal EQUIP program or CalFire's CFIP and. You can see what those acronyms stand for, you don't need to dwell on those too much, but the, there's a lot of issues with both of those programs. In terms of actually getting, getting dollars into people's hands so that they can do work, because it's the cost share program. You know, similar to any other agricultural support program. But because of the way it works, the timing of when they pay bills and kind of the bureaucratic part of it, a lot of people don't engage and I think I actually heard that. CFIP has not, there's not been a CFIP dollar spent in Lake County in like ten years because of this, so. Part of, CalFire kind of understands this and that's why they developed this, they wanted to rebuild North Bay with the four county partners to develop this new program. So it officially rolled out about a month ago and we are technically taking applications, but it is. Still a few kinks to work out in our application process, so. It'll be around for about three years unless we get more funding and I think there's a good chance it could be funded more, once we kind of get it off the ground. But this is just another example of how we're able to kind of leverage this work that we've been doing and building a network of people that need help and. Working with partners outside the county to get a little more technical expertise to us in here in this project, so. With that, that's all we have for right now, does anyone have any questions or anything about Clerk's fire and forestry program?
Thank you very much for your presentation and we'll go back to Supervisor Price, got to start us off.
Well, I'm so grateful that you've spent the last few years and the, and the whole Clerk team building up this capacity. As Laurel mentioned, there's the potential for a billion dollars next year from the state coming down for fire mitigation. And it is absolutely imperative that we have our structures in place so that we can take advantage of that funding and so the work that you have been doing. Is critical to that and we cannot thank you enough. Laurel, you have been hitting the road, you've been touring this county, you've been to every meeting there is. And you've been listening to the needs and you've been mapping it out and we have not had that happen ever, so thank you for doing that and Laurel's an intern. I am hoping that after her internship is over, she's going to make a home here in Lake County because. Because she's a rock star, so thank you to both of you. You've covered a whole lot of information, I know this is just a primer of kind of the stuff that we've been talking about and working through. In collaboration with the Risk Reduction Authority and some of the grassroots groups that you mentioned, the Cobb Area Council was. You know, really, a lot of volunteers with that organization were instrumental in, in helping get this going, so lots of. Big gratitude to the volunteers all over who've been pushing this. That, I guess the most basic question is, how do people reach out to you if they have concerns in their areas? How do other supervisors reach out to you and how do we get more programs in your system, you know, going forward in the years to come?
Oh, there's a couple of strategies for that, you could always contact us through the Clerk website or you can send me an email directly. Or I encourage people to participate in the Risk Reduction Authority and I think that's something. You know, that group was just created a couple of years ago to, to help address this problem and. It, it has so much potential and I think it's, you know, it can go as far as the people that get involved want to take it, so. That'd be my recommendation, I, I will say, like I mentioned in the presentation, if you have, if you're a large forest landowner, say you own. You know, twenty acres or two hundred acres and you want to try to get a, a community-type project, when I say community-type project, that usually means. Large-scale crosses, boundaries, involves several different landowners, maybe some public right-of-way components. I would prefer if you kind of like do that little bit of. Community building in your own neck of the woods before you bring that to us and if you kind of want to figure out, you know, some tips and pointers, we can kind of get you started, but. That's kind of the scale we're working at.
Thank you very much, I was going to pass it on directly to Supervisor Simon since I know you've been working with Clerk a little bit on the RRA. In case you wanted to add something from that perspective.
You know, obviously, just appreciate the presentation, but the collaboration that's happened at the Risk Reduction Authorities, the Standing Committee, everything, you know, it's really starting to get traction, so. What we're doing now, obviously, is the baseline work that's just going to help us really propel Lake County into a complete fire-safe county and. You know, all the collaborated efforts are just well appreciated and I think we have the right folks at the table right now, but I know we're looking to grow and expand. We're looking to invite the cities, we're looking to engage more tribal governments here locally. And continue just to grow with our nonprofits and community organizations here, this is how you do it, from the ground up, so. Appreciate the steps being taken forward by everybody in this and Laurel has attended our Milltown Area Town Hall also. And, you know, hit every group, as Jessica said, across the county, so the communication and collaboration's happening. And we will start to see boots-on-the-ground projects because of Clerk's efforts and everyone's else's and it'll just continue to increase over the next few years, so. It takes a while to get things going, but we're really starting to get that traction and I'm excited about where we're headed, so. Thank you, everybody, and all the volunteers and the landowners stepping up to say, hey, we're all in this together here and we got these projects we want to get completed. And we're even creating the Lake County Prescribed Burn Association, be great to see those long cultural traditions come back to this area. Been done for thousands of years, we've taken a break and, you know, now we're going to bring that stuff back to help with the forest management. And also the safety of our communities that are built into these wildland urban interface areas, so I'm excited about how we're doing it, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you Supervisor, Laurel Bard, you had something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to really stress to any community members who are listening to this, that really, if you want to get involved, the Risk Reduction Authority and also your Municipal Advisory Council. Right now, we know it might be a little hard to figure out which Municipal Advisory Council you fall under. Or your area potentially doesn't have a Municipal Advisory Council yet, but we're really gonna work on getting those community groups involved. They're a really good outlet for you to have a place to express your concerns and to work with other community members who share those concerns, so getting involved in your Municipal Advisory Council. Would be very helpful.
Perfect, thank you for that, any other comments or questions from?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Laurel, I just wanted to remind you that the, the meeting for WORTH is actually seventeenth instead of the twenty-fourth.
So I, I have a, a question, I've, and, and bear with me, I know that I, I get hung up on certain things. I've been learning a whole lot in the past few weeks about programmatic EIR, before, a few weeks ago, I had no idea what programmatic EIR even was. But I do know from working with both Will and Laurel with the BLM and CalFire, what's going to happen to the east of Clear Lake. Which is actually, their part of the project is this much smaller footprint than the CalFire and BLM part of the project, but they're actually looking at twenty-two hundred acres. Of potential prescribed burn possibly next year, they're going to look at a little bit of remediation for this year with some vegetation abatement. But it required NEPA and NEPA has taken them granted, they're not only working on this project, but it's taken them five years since twenty fifteen. To start the process, to go through the archaeological, the biological and to get everything approved. In order to be able to do the prescribed burn, knowing what the impact will be to the environment and any abatements that need to be done. Or mitigation that needs to be done to mitigate that, those impacts. It's the same basic concept for any other public land, I know on private land, you can bypass the CEQA or NEPA, I'm kind of looking at Will and Laurel. Is that possible or no, depending on who does it?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of complicated, but you are kind of hitting one of the issues with doing these community projects and. For one thing, you know, if I'm an individual landowner and I decide to go out and do fuel reduction in my yard, there's no permits required, you're encouraged, go out there, do it, you know.
As in air quality control.
Well, if you're not burning. But one thing, you know, anytime the state funds a project, that is a trigger for CEQA and in this case, you know, they funded several million dollars, so we have to make sure we document. How CEQA was handled for that and also kind of complicating it is that projects on federal land need NEPA. At least for the, the projects we've proposed, the NEPA was already completed, so it's just a matter of kind of gathering it and submitting it to CalFire. But it is kind of a giant paperwork exercise to document all of these things that are exempt from environmental review. It's one thing in the future, we've kind of talked about this a little bit at the Risk Reduction Authority. Is developing and I don't know if it's a programmatic EIR or an annual exemption for certain projects, but. There are certain things that we're going to want to maintain year after year, these are fuel breaks, fuel reduction within neighborhoods. And anytime, I think a lot of it, you know, back to the, you can work in your neighborhoods and that doesn't necessarily require a CEQA review, but if you're getting state funding, it does, so it's like if we figure out. What things are going to trigger it and we can kind of structure the CEQA review that way. But in a lot of ways, it's, you know, filing exemptions on a regular basis that coincide with funding that's awarded, that's, that's not necessarily a bad strategy, it's just. You're still kind of, you know, playing it case by case. So one thing, a programmatic EIR would allow everyone to kind of understand what they're in for. You know, way ahead of time, but there is a process to get those done and they're expensive, so. You know, my, I haven't run the numbers and figuring out what's really the best, but I, I have, I'm committed to looking into it more and trying to streamline it.
And the reason I bring it up is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, in speaking with BLM and CalFire, once this NEPA process has been approved. And we can go ahead and move forward, that same binder of information and documentation can be reused for multiple years to ensure. The, the safety of that area.
Yes.
Like you don't have to do NEPA again, all over again, just because you've gotten it approved, you did your burn. There might be a limitation on how long you can use it, but at least it provides you some. Room to be able to do this a little bit more automatically rather than having to go through a really rugged process like we've had to deal with so far.
Yeah, yeah, and I think of a good analogy I've used is thinking about maintaining your water and sewer systems and. I'd like to start thinking about vegetation management more of like infrastructure, because if. Because if, you know, if you have to do these things to maintain a habitable structure in your neighborhood, maintaining your water and sewer, well, you also need to maintain the vegetation. And, you know, if your water line breaks, you don't have to do a SEQA review or, you know, to get, before you dig the hole to fix it, you just, you just do it because it's part of maintenance. So I think we need to start treating these projects more like that. But it, it may require some state action to, to really make that point. And, you know, it's kind of an evolving field. But CAL FIRE, and not to go off too much of a tangent, late, late last year, they adopted a programmatic EIR called the Vegetation Treatment Program. And I actually have a webinar Thursday this week to hear about how NGOs and private parties have been using that CAL FIRE document to clear grants. So it's, maybe it's a tool that we can use to streamline things in the future. Maybe we'll use it on the Forest Health Grant that's coming up this summer. But I need to, I need to learn more about it to see if it's actually going to streamline things or, because the flip side of a programmatic EIR is that it dictates you have to do X, Y, and Z. So in a lot of ways, that provides certainty, but it can also add a whole lot of extra work if it's stuff that, that doesn't need to be reviewed. And I think that, that's a big part. We need to figure out what level of review is acceptable in our community for these projects. And that's something I take pretty, pretty seriously, being a, a someone who has worked in permitting in the county for a long time. You know, you got to find that sweet spot where we're doing due diligence, but not burdening things with too much paperwork.
Right, right. No more, no more added bureaucracy on top of it. And I believe what you're speaking of, the programmatic EIR that the state did was for state land. And I don't know if they also did federal land, but that was back in March of 2020 or something like that, that I saw the press release for that. And that's where I got the idea of, at least discussing it today, just in case it wasn't a discussion at the RRA, to see how we can partner up where we do have something that we can just pull off the shelf and say, go ahead and do the project you want to do versus think of a project, go through the process and you eventually get to the project. If we can help facilitate to make that more efficient, then we actually are doing something great in helping keep us safe from the fires. So I just wanted to at least have that discuss, bring up the discussion in case that wasn't being discussed specifically over at the RRA.
Yeah, yeah. And I think from just a government operations standpoint, I, I did sit through the cannabis permitting discussion last week. And I think it's, you know, clerk is going to be, you having to get exemptions and things through that department. And I know they're, they're totally swamped with a lot of things right now. But a programmatic EIR and kind of leveraging CAL FIRE's environmental review may be a way to advance these projects without having to add more to the workload in, in CDD.
Yeah. So any other further comments or questions from the board before we open it up for the public? Seeing none. Jake, let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room and see if we have anyone from the public that wishes to make a comment or ask questions. Oh, and I see we have Gene Yun. Let's go ahead and start with you.
Oh, great. Thanks. I'm in a FireWise group right in that area of Harrington Flat that you outlined. It's one of your project areas, Will. And so first of all, I want to say how incredibly grateful we are down there that you have focused on a project and we're very happy to see that things are moving forward. So I have three questions and I'm just going to ask them all together because they're probably related. One, again, I'm in this FireWise group. I had moved into the area and asked the Cobb Area Council and Jessica and Elliot were all great and they referred me to that. But I did notice that you didn't mention FireWise all throughout and you did mention private folks getting involved. Do I need to pay attention to more things? Because I'll tell you that, you know, just as a private citizen, it's hard to keep track of all the different organizations that we're being suggested we need to keep in touch with. And I was kind of hoping that FireWise would be for a community a central point that folks in the group could rely on and not feel like, oh, they have to look at the Risk Reduction Authority programs or this or that. And so that, that's question one. Question two is, you know, as we plan our activities for our group in that area, how do we make sure that we're, we stay out of your way? You know, if you're doing a major project there, we don't want to overlap days. So just pure logistics, how do we stay coordinated? And then question number three is, but then how do we participate if that's even a possibility? I, I would say in the FireWise group, probably typical, a lot of areas on Cobb, we have two types of people, let's say. You know, we have the type that who, they do a lot of work. They have a lot of equipment. They're super helpful in educating the rest of us, like myself included, who don't know enough about these things. But, you know, when there's a big day of work down on Harrington Flat, I mean, I think a lot of the folks in my group are going to be asked, hey, can we participate? I mean, we, we have equipment. We have knowledge. I mean, there are CAL FIRE folks who live in the area. These, these people are paid to go and do work elsewhere. If there's a pay program in our area, can't we get the actual professionals who live in our area, the guys with knowledge to, to work in our area potentially for some of that money? Again, I, it's not so much about getting the money. It's about, if you're talking about the way to keep us safe is, is to hire a bunch of contractors to come in every, you know, five years or so on some cycle. I mean, to me, I don't know that that's a long-term, sustainable certainty that most of us want to feel like we have. We want to feel like our community, our neighborhood knows how to manage the area that we live in. And so how do we participate with the boots on the ground? Because we have boots. Then there is though, the other portion of our community, which honestly, for various physical or economic reasons, they can hardly participate in anything. But these are some of the most dangerous areas. These are people living on, you know, half acre, one acre plots altogether, really deep in dense woods. And we all really think about that too. How do we help these folks who, they don't have the resources? Nobody's focusing on them. Everything that we've heard about today is about very, very large areas of land, which I understand you have to do large first.
And Gene, would you go ahead and wrap it up, please?
And, and that's it. Those are the three questions together. Thanks for, sorry about that.
Uh, we'll see. I think a couple of the answers, I think, involve, the answers sort of work with the Risk Reduction Authority. And I say that it's, that's my hope, that the Risk Reduction Authority will be kind of the catching ground for everybody that wants to figure out how to get involved with their community and then we can steer them to whatever that local group is. And I did actually, there, I cut about three or four slides out of the process that we used to get the, the projects together. Because a lot of it was, we did get some, I worked with a few FireWise communities and get lists of projects and things. And it didn't all make it into the grants, but we had to kind of balance all those goals I mentioned of kind of spreading the money around, trying to get all the different groups involved and trying to keep the project manageable. And that's one thing, just kind of as a side note, going into this, we heard a lot of, kind of the word from CAL FIRE was a couple of years ago was, you know, Lake County's got a big problem. You know, whatever you ask for, you'll, you'll get whatever you ask for. That was that, that keeps ringing through my head. And, but the problem with that, I thought, we'll ask for a lot, but we need to not bite off more than we can chew. And the, that kind of boils down to not really knowing what we're capable of, which is, and that's, you know, clerk and that's also the community and the partnerships. And one of my kind of frustrations with that is that not knowing your capabilities swings both ways. It's that you could, you don't want to overbite, but, you know, you don't want to undershoot either. So my goal, another one of my goals over the next few years is try to scale this up and try to do more and get more boots on the ground. And I think that kind of goes into one of Gene's other questions about, you know, how can the locals get involved and coordinate with these contracts and the boots on the ground? And to that, I'll say that we actually, we don't have a firm strategy in place for how we're going to be distributing the Forest Health funds. And I know based on the, the conversations I had with several of the landowners, a lot of them, they want to kind of receive the money through different ways. And some people said, you know, I just want to sign a right of entry and then have you find the contractor and deal with it. And then other people say like, well, I can do my own work. And there's a landowner that's actually prepared to finance like $200,000 worth of equipment on their own. And then they want to use some of this grant money to do work to help offset the cost. And I think that's a, a great idea. And he's actually working, he's contacted three or four other people that are also in the Forest Health Grant in his neck of the woods. And he's going to try to get them to work out a deal where, you know, we pay the landowner to get the work done. The landowner pays somebody else to get it done. And if it happens to be their neighbor lives across the way that just bought a bunch of equipment, then that's even better because it pays to get that equipment there. And then it's there all the time, even once our grant's over. So that, I think, is a good strategy. I'm also trying to figure out how to kind of expand on that idea and create a, what I call an equipment co-op. And that's kind of a, I don't know, it may take a few years to come to fruition, but just the idea that if you have people in an area that have skills, they just need access to good equipment that's maintained. Try to fill that hole for them, but it's going to have to be strategic and make sure that people are trained and the insurance is probably going to be, you know, boondoggle, but we'll figure that out when we get to it.
And I would suggest that I think the answer, the best answer was already provided as far as how to know what exactly is going on and how to be a part of it, I think is going to have to go through the municipal town halls where those town halls should be aware of what's happening in the local area and being able to offer that information to everybody in the area of how they can get involved and what they can do. Because you're right that there, or Gene is right, that there is a lot of different groups and it's hard to keep track of everything. So hopefully things can get funneled through those town halls in some way, shape, or form. Jake, let's go ahead and move on to the next public comment, please.
All right. I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and close public comment. Laurel, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to add that Will and I are also working on developing a web map of projects that we can actually put out, like the map that's on the clerk website, but more comprehensive. So that can potentially be another site where private citizens could go and look at the work that's being done in Lake County that would not require necessarily going to a meeting. It would just be something you can do on your own if you have access to the internet.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions further from the board?
Last comment would be to Gene's question about, you know, individuals, elders, folks that aren't able to work on that. I know that's a conversation we're having at Risk Reduction Authority. I know that the South Lake Fire Council has neighbor helping neighbor opportunities and I know we want to build on those things. So it is conversations that are happening, but as we're building the program, hopefully those, you know, we'll continue to expand on those as we move forward. So it is being talked about. How do we help our elderly and our disabled communities in this vegetation thing? So those conversations are happening and they'll be developed as we move through the process.
Perfect. Thank you for that added information.
Yeah. And, and that is kind of the restructuring work that we're doing in the RRA and then also in the Fire Safe Council. We're looking at where that organization, agency, community intersections are and how we can disseminate the information and, and have those arms of the programs reach the places that need to reach. And so that's a lot of the strategy work that Supervisor Simon and I are involved in right now.
You know, just, just one final comment too here, you know, it, it's also creating a new industry, the potential for, for individuals. You know, there are going to be folks that need lock clearing, other things like that. It also is, and we talked about it overall, is economic development opportunities for the county and business opportunities for folks. We already know there's not enough folks who go out and do the vegetation clearing and other things. So in the long run, we're also creating a new economy to make our safe places, you know, our community safer, but also creating job opportunities down the road. So it's also economic development and safety of our community being combined together when you look at the long-term future of this.
Agreed. Thank you very much for your presentation today and for all the work that you're doing. And I'm sure that we will be hearing more of the debriefing of all your projects once you've gotten some completed, so we can figure out what the impacts have been and how we can move forward and do more.
Thank you, guys.